is being held for ordinance 2024-8 amending section 1105.03, general fence requirements within the planning and zoning code of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. Per the city of Brooklyn zoning code, section 1111.05A5 zoning text or map amendment approval process. After the application process, the city requested amendment through legislation and went through two readings. It goes to the planning commission for their recommendation and returns to city council, followed by a public hearing prior to adoption. City council placed this ordinance on first reading on March the 11th and then on second reading on March the 25th, where they referred to the planning commission for their recommendation. At the planning commission session held April 3rd, the commission recommended a modification of the amendment requested to section 1105.03 to read as follows. No fence shall be permitted beyond the rear corners of the principal structure on any lot unless specifically permitted herein. Notwithstanding this provision or figure 1111.05.04-1, in a residential district, a fence parallel with the rear building line may be installed beyond the rear corners of the principal structure to encompass a side door plus a maximum of three feet towards the front of the building line where the principal structure has no rear door but a side door. This public hearing is being held to fulfill our zoning code requirements. If anyone in the public has any comment pertaining to this, please step forward to address council. At the start of your comments, please state your name and address for the record. There is none. Does anyone on council have any questions? Thank you. That concludes this public hearing.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jo, will you call the roll, please?
Erin Barowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Absent excused.
Matt Mosley.
Here.
At this time, please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance, after which councilman Barowski will provide opening comments.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great justice of our
With the continued escalation on both sides, both parts going on in the Gaza Strip right now, I just ask for a moment of silence so we can remember those Palestinians and Israelis that we have as a worldwide community have lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes from our meeting of April 8th, 2024. Any comments or questions or additions, deletions on that? Okay, we need a motion to approve, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
To approve the minutes, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Upstein.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor for the swearing in of our newest
Thank you, council president Mark. You could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mark Zarafos.
I, Mark Zarafos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and law of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a patrol officer in the city of Brooklyn.
As a patrol officer in the city of Brooklyn.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to the mayor for a proclamation.
Thank you, council president. If I could have the fifth and sixth grade boys basketball team come on up here and join me in the front. So come on up, guys. I'll read this proclamation. So again, read this, and we have a copy of this for all these young men. It says this, "To honor and recognize the Brooklyn Hurricanes' fifth and sixth grade boys, Blue Boys Basketball Team on being the 2023-2024 SWS Youth Recreation Travel League Champions. The Brooklyn Hurricanes' fifth and sixth grade boys basketball team finished the season with a perfect record of eight and oh, and an overall record of ten and oh, including two tournament wins. The team defeated Olmsted Falls in the finals on February 24th at the Brooklyn Middle School Fieldhouse and won the A Division consisting of the top teams in the 24-team league. The city of Brooklyn is proud of their fine representation of sportsmanship, character, and leadership that these young men displayed, and the team members and coaches made our community proud with an exciting season and displayed superior camaraderie, spirit, hard work, and determination that it takes to be a champion." So congratulations to Ace Brown, Jacob Gonzalez, Jackson Santana, Antonio Cologne Jr., Grayson Hatfield, Bryson Van Ness, Liam Fincham, Bryson Heimberger, and their coaches, Justin Finchman and Nick Cole. Let's give them a hand. Congratulations, job well done. Good job, good job.
Thank you.
Good job, man, good job. Good job, buddy, nice job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job, congratulations. Good job, man, congratulations. Right, coach.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Great job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, great job. Great job. All right, guys, who do you have? All right, guys, come in the back.
Okay, at this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say regarding a legislative item on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Next, we'll move on to reports of committee, commissions, and boards, and we'll start with the finance committee. The finance committee did meet earlier this evening at 6:00 PM and addressed the following pieces of legislation. 2024-10, which is on second reading, an ordinance authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2024. This adds $32,000 to our capital improvement plan due to an increase for police cars and the ancillary equipment associated with the vehicles. We're also adding $55,000 for the ballistic vets. This was originally scheduled to be purchased in 2025, and we're moving this up because the current warranty expires this year, as well as the useful life will reach its five years this year. So we're just moving it from 2025 to 2024. Resolution 2024-7, which is up for first reading with a request to adopt under suspension of the rules, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Laborers Local 860, Laborers International Union of North America for 2024 through 2026. Ordinance 2024-11, up for first reading with a request to adopt under suspension of the rules, providing for the programs and community events operated and conducted by the Recreation Department of the city of Brooklyn. The main purpose of this ordinance was to add the category of community events and programs to our current schedule of charges. And while the Rec Department was doing this, they also did take a look at some of our other programs, and there are some slight increases and some tweaks to the lengths of the program. Ordinance 2024-12, which is up for first reading with a request to adopt under suspension of the rules, amending Exhibit A of ordinance 2023-8, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time, and administrative employees' non-bargaining unit agreement for the city of Brooklyn. What we're adjusting is the top rate. Right now, for a law enforcement clerk is $20 per hour, and with an annual cost of living increase that they received January 1st, one of them is making 35 cents more per hour, so we're increasing the top of the range to $21. We had a report from our finance director, which he will provide to the public during the directors' reports, and the finance committee did vote to recommend adopting all this legislation. For the committee of the whole, the committee of the whole did meet earlier this evening at 6:15, and in addition to the finance legislative items that I just addressed, we also addressed the following items. Ordinance 2023-40, which is up for third reading and adoption, enacting Chapter 157 Inclusion and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. This, we've actually been working on this legislation since towards the end of last year. What I mentioned earlier was that all of us have had opportunity to provide their input, ideas, and opinions, and the final version does not contain 100% of what any individual was looking for. This was truly a collaboration and a compromise, including meeting with the mayor and listening to his concerns and making changes based on those concerns. Ordinance 2024-8, which is up for third reading and adoption, amending section 1105.03, general fence requirements within the planning and zoning code of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. This was what we just had a public hearing on right before our council meeting. This is to accommodate residents who have a side door to their house. The way our current zoning reads is if you erect a fence, you can't go towards the front beyond your rear building line. So this will accommodate those who have a side door that they want to fence in, and they will be allowed to go up to three feet ahead of the side door, but they still will not be able to place a fence in front of the front building line. Under new business, we have ordinance 2024-5, which is on first reading, a resolution accepting Cuyahoga County's 911 Plan. Resolution 2024-6, which is also on first reading, a resolution nominating and voting on an appointee to Cuyahoga County's 911 Program Review Committee. And that concludes the report from the committee of the whole. Now we'll move on to the Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
The Magic Adventures Ice Show at the Rec Center is this Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $10 and can be purchased at www.brooklynrec.com. Spring activities at the Senior Center for April and May. April 23rd, Playhouse Square bus trip. Meet at the Senior Center at 4:30. Dinner at the Hoffra Opera House at 5:00 PM. Amanda's at 7:00 PM. Registration is now open. April 24th, Bingo, 1:00 PM, the Brooklyn Point. April 29th, Ohio Wildlife Program with the Cleveland Metro Parks at 11:00 AM. May 1st, Pizza and Movie, 1:00 PM. May 3rd. May 8th, Mother's Day Tea and Luncheon, noon, costs $6. May 16th, Mystery Lunch, meet at the Senior Center at 11:30 AM. Registration begins May 1st, costs $3. May 20th, Memorial Day Ceramic Craft, 9:30 AM, costs $10. Brooklyn YMCA Summer Day Camp will be held 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, June 10th to July 5th and July 8th to August 2nd at the Senior Center. Cost is $200 weekly for residents and non-residents. Please contact Amanda Natal at A-N-A-T-A-L at clevelandymca.org or call the Payment Register's office at 216-263-6860 for more information. Weekly themes allow campers to learn through our Sporting Nature Character Development activities. We're also adding community events. We'll do this with the seniors at the Brooklyn Senior Center. This year's Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony on May 27th will kick off at 11:00 AM at the Brooklyn Recreation Center and end at the Brooklyn High School Stadium. Special ceremony will begin at noon, where families will be invited to state their loved ones' name. To participate in the parades, to parade, please contact Rachel at r-l-a-s-k-o-w-s-k-y@brooklynohio.gov or call 216-635-4282. Next recreation meeting will be held on May 13th in Rec Center Meeting Room, 7:00 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission reports, Councilman Coyle.
Good evening. The city of Brooklyn has scheduled a planning commission meeting for Wednesday, May 1st at 6:00 PM in the council chambers to hear the following. A request from Zeisler Morgan Properties for a preliminary site plan approval for an outlot building at 7320 North Cliff Avenue in Ridge Park Square, permanent parcel number And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. School Board Liaison, Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. The school board met on April 16th to conduct a regularly scheduled meeting. During this meeting, Superintendent Clarice announced that Brooklyn received a Purple Star Award. This award is given to schools that honor their schools' military families. It's the first time that Brooklyn has received this award, so congratulations to the school district. The school also received a career and technical program grant from the state of Ohio. This grant is valued at $266,000. The grant is focused on careers and jobs that the state of Ohio has prioritized as top jobs. This is another option to help our young adults that might not have a four-year degree in mind. The next school board meeting will be a workshop and is scheduled for May 7th at 6:00 PM in the treasurer's office, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. I think Councilman Tansky wants to be recognized again.
Correction, on the recreation board meeting, it'll be May 20th in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to reports of the council, and this evening, we begin with Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, council president. Good evening, Brooklyn. Thank you for those that are able to make it tonight. I wanted to say congratulations to our newest police officer, Mark Zarafos. I'm wishing you a long and safe career in Brooklyn. Congratulations to these young men, the boys' basketball team that was awarded a proclamation tonight on their championship. And I'd like to also say thank you to the supporters of the school bond issue. It has been officially certified as passing, and I'm sure we're eager as a community to see the much-needed updates and improvements to the school facility. I'd like to also say, good job goes out to Mr. Butler and the mayor on working diligently on the agreement with the Laborers Local 860. As always, Kevin, thank you for the work that you do. With the road project starting in and around Brooklyn, I'm personally asking those that need to adjust your driving speeds and slow down near these construction zones and where else appropriate. And for those that are celebrating it this week, I'm wishing you a happy Passover, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to offer my sincerest condolences to the family of Rita Pavia, mother of Marie McGinty, who recently passed away. Also, I am deeply saddened on the passing of another longtime resident, Valentina, mother and grandmother to the Burns's family. Our deepest sympathies go out to both families during this difficult time. We'd like to welcome and congratulate Brooklyn's new police officer, Mark Zarafos. Zarafos, I get that right? Also, congratulations to the Brooklyn fifth and sixth grade basketball team on their championship win. Great job. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Grodick.
Thank you. Good evening. I also would like to welcome our newest officer. I think that brings us up to four, that four new ones. So it's great to have these new faces in Brooklyn keeping us safe, and I wish him a long and especially safe career. I also would like to congratulate the boys' team that's sitting in front of us. I know many of their faces, and I know some of their little sister faces that I see, too. Congratulations. Y'all know I'm a teacher, but I am a very firm believer that education does not only happen in the classroom, and the education that students get, that young athletes get on the court and on the field, we can't replace it in our classrooms. So thank you to the parents for making sure that they get this part of their education that we really can't supply in the classrooms, and keep it up, boys, because we need you to be strong and athletic, and you will learn so much from being part of a sports team. So congratulations to you. Mr. Barowski brought up the road construction that will be coming up. I didn't know this, maybe many of you don't know, that April 28th is actually Workers' Memorial Day, and it is a holiday that has been in existence for 50 years, and it is specifically to remember those who are injured and killed in a workplace and to recommit to ourselves to make our workplaces safer and also that we are safer employees. So it goes along with the beginning of road construction. Let's try and make Ohio's road workers extra safe by being very cognizant of what we're doing as drivers. And many of you may know, today is Earth Day, April 22nd is Earth Day. So just to end, I have five easy things that we can do to help protect our earth. We often hear in the news, very, very large global things that's really hard to wrap our brains around, but one thing we can do is conserve water. We can be more car-conscious. We can switch to LED lights. We can plant a tree. And last, we can really strive to use less plastic in our lives. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Coyle.
Thank you. Good evening and Happy Earth Day, everyone. Welcome to our newest police officer, Mark Zarafos, wishing you a long, safe, and successful career here in Brooklyn. Congratulations to the fifth, sixth grade boys' basketball team on their league championship win. And then tonight on third reading is ordinance 2023-40, enacting Chapter 157 Inclusion and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. I want to take a moment to recognize that this piece of legislation has taken a lot of work and collaboration over the last five months. I would be remiss if I didn't also take this opportunity to thank everyone who spoke on behalf of it and/or offered thoughts and suggestions along the way. I'd also like to thank co-sponsors of Councilwoman Sue Grodick and Councilman Matt Mosley for backing this and working through all the suggestions, comments, and helping to determine which edits to make. Thank you to the mayor for taking the time to sit down with me multiple times to discuss. Thank you to Kevin Butler for drafting and redrafting this piece of legislation multiple times. And finally, I thank you to the rest of my fellow council members for patiently working through this together and allowing the substitutions each time. This ordinance is not meant to divide. The intention has always been to bring people closer together through education and learning. I believe we have done our best to take into account everything that has been brought in front of us and that we are delivering an ordinance that will work in the best interest of the city and its stakeholders. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. I also, as everybody else has already done, want to congratulate our newest police officer, Mark Zarafos, and the young men in front of us here today. I also want to congratulate Ms. Grodick on receiving the Fulbright Scholarship. It's a very prestigious award, and she should be very proud. I think you're the second person in our school district to ever receive it. She was also accepted into the Fulbright Hayes Seminar abroad in Finland for four weeks this summer. So while you're on recess from here, you'll be in Finland. I also want to thank my fellow council members and the mayor for working on the proposed legislation, 2023-40. Obviously, it's been a long process. The legislation has last year in the title, and it's almost the end of April. I want to thank everybody that came and spoke regarding the legislation, regardless of whether you're for or against it, it's extremely important that your voice is heard. For example, the bond issue for the school passed, I believe, by a mere 11 votes. So that's six people voting for it instead of against it. So everybody's voice, we've been reminded very recently in Brooklyn specifically, that it's important to get out and vote. Additionally, I want to tell everybody that kindergarten and preschool registration is open for the 2024-2025 school year. Visit brooklyn.k12.ohio.us to register, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. I also would like to welcome and congratulate our newest police officer, Mark Zarafos. I wish him a very long, safe, and successful career in our community. And congratulations also to the fifth and sixth grade boys who are still here at the meeting, which is very nice. Your coaches, your parents, our entire community is very proud of your efforts, so keep up the hard work. I'd also like to offer my condolences to the McGinty family on the passing of Maria's mother, Mrs. Pavia. And as has been mentioned, the bond issue for the schools is now finalized. It was so close that it had to go to a recount, so that is final, and that did pass. So that's good news for our community. Regarding issue, our ordinance 2023-40, the belonging and inclusion, I sincerely believe that we in Brooklyn can get this right, and I look forward to hearing from residents about their experiences and any feedback they may have for us on how we can do better. I, too, would like to thank the residents who reached out to us on this and also regarding their experiences. Since there's been so many changes, I did just want to read through what the duties of the commission are going to be in our final version. Educating and sharing information with city officials and the public concerning the importance of inclusion and belonging within the Brooklyn community. Considering inclusion and belonging policies and programs to promote best practices that are inclusive and offer a sense of belonging for all stakeholders. Reviewing proposed legislative actions and other matters referred to the commission by city council and the administration. Making recommendations to the mayor and city council on matters pertaining to methods, opportunities, and avenues for the promotion of and continuance of inclusion and belonging which may be implemented by city council and the city administration for the betterment of the diverse stakeholders of the city. And then there's a reporting component. The city council representatives serving on the commission shall keep council and the mayor apprised of the work of the commission. There shall be an annual report submitted to council and the mayor on the activities of the commission, any recommendations the commission has, and the result. Should the commission conclude that there is no further work for the commission, it shall report to city council and request that the commission be disbanded. And one thing I do want to emphasize, that is that this commission is advisory. They can make recommendations to council and the mayor. However, they have no authority to do anything on their own. This is truly just an advisory, I shouldn't say just, this is truly an advisory commission. A couple other quick things I would also like to mention and encourage everyone to please be careful during construction season, especially nowadays, there's so much construction being done at night, and I know it's more difficult to see. I personally knew two people who worked on road construction crews that were killed, and they left, you know, wives and children. So just go a little slower and pay really close attention when you're in those construction zones. And congratulations to Councilwoman Grodick on the terrific honor, and I know personally how dedicated she is to the education of our children. And that concludes my report. Now we'll have the mayor's report.
Thank you, council president. Just another reminder, the exterior home maintenance program is currently accepting applications. The city will accept these applications at the Building Department through May the 19th. at the Building Department through May the 19th. This is up to a $3,000 grant for exterior maintenance. There's a lot more information on the city's website, or you can call the housing manager, Lev Kolchitsky, in the Building Department at 216-635-5213. I also want to say congratulations to Dr. Claris, the Brooklyn School Board and the city schools for the passage of the school levy. I was honored to support this levy. I know it was very close, and I certainly understand those that voted against it. But I'm very happy to see that it passed and that we'll see some much improvements, both at the city school campus as well as over at the track and the area and over on Hurricane Alley. Also, not to be redundant, but congratulations, Mrs. Grodek. Not too many people on summer break want to go back to school, much less go back to school on the other side of the world. And that's what she's doing. So she's spending four weeks in Finland. So congratulations. Hope you have a wonderful time over there. Guys, congratulations. Thanks for sticking around. I appreciate you and your families being here. This is the second one, Mr. Ragus, that we've been able to do in the last several months. So that bodes well for the future of Brooklyn sports. So coaches, thank you so much. Thank you, parents. I know it's a lot of time traveling back and forth to games and practices and dragging along younger siblings to it. So congratulations, guys, and keep up the great work. Some updates on some projects we have going on in the city. The I-480 Tideman Turn Lane Project, that work began today. This work should last about three to four weeks. Several council members have mentioned the 2024 paving program. That work began over on Williamson and Bearwald on April the 15th. All the residents were notified by letter. The chip seal will be installed starting today. And this is intermediate and surface course. The chip seal is installed to provide a bonding agent between the base and the asphalt. It'll improve the life of the asphalt. And so as well as reduce cracking. The final surface will be asphalt. I did speak directly with Dr. Claris before the construction began. He was able to get an email out to all the students in that area, actually, the whole district, to let them know what's going on back there. And please be careful. No one likes construction season when it's going on. But it obviously is a necessary evil if we want to have the nice roads that we have in the city. So right now, it's Brook, Bearwald, and Williamson. May 28th, and I'll mention that in a second, will start here on Memphis Avenue. And then Southwood will also be done this year as well. And so please be on the lookout for those construction barrels, and especially around the school zone. Please be careful with children. The pool consultants spent all day on Thursday with our team over there, walking and reviewing the current pool conditions. As you know, we are working on a plan to completely renovate the natatorium side of the recreation center over the next several years, including the indoor pool as well as the outdoor pool. Their planning work is moving forward as scheduled, and so we look forward to seeing what they have for us. The landscaping at I-40 in Tideman was slated to begin today as well. And that will be going on throughout the early part of the summer. The Memphis Road Diet, as I alluded to a second ago, that pre-construction meeting took place last week. They'll begin work out here in front of City Hall in this stretch on May the 28th. We mentioned last year that the city was implementing a traffic calming system here in the city. Discreet speeding sensors have been placed on a couple of streets in the city to record traffic volumes and speeds. As part of that traffic calming, we're going to be putting in temporary traffic calming measures, called chicanes, on various streets and then monitoring those streets to see if it slowed the traffic down. If these are in success, a more permanent installation will take place on these streets. And the goal is to implement this traffic calming procedure throughout the entire city as it is warranted. In regards to a piece of legislation this evening, Resolution 2024-7, this is the labor union Local 860 contract. I want to thank Mr. Butler and Mr. Ragus for their work on finalizing this contract and for the union voting to approve it. This is the final contract of the season. And so we'll be glad to have this done. And if council would consider passing by suspension of the rules, it would be greatly appreciated. As far as personnel updates, the Police Department is now accepting applications for lateral transfers through April 30th. Mrs. Grodek mentioned the fact that we've sworn in four, and she's correct. But that just replaces retirements and those that we've lost. So we are actually at the budgeted number from last year. We have yet to go into the four additional. So we're hoping to be able to hire them off that lateral transfer list I'm here in the next several months. And then lastly, the state of the city and the state of the schools will take place right here in council chambers. Dr. Claris is going to come over on Wednesday at 10:00 AM. And for the first time, I don't know if it's been ever, but it's at least been a long time since the state of the city and the state of the schools have been at the same time. And so all are welcome to attend. I know it's in the morning on a workday, but it will be livestreamed on YouTube, and it will also be on there to watch later time as well. So looking forward to having Dr. Claris here with us. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports of directors. And this evening, we have a report from our finance director, Mr. Ragus.
Thank you very much. I just have two items on the agenda for tonight. The first item is the overview of the general fund financial report through the first quarter of 2024. On the revenue side, overall revenues are 26% of the estimated amount and 12% more than prior year due to an increase in income tax revenue. The increase in income tax revenue is a result of non-recurring revenue that we received through the first quarter of this year that we did not receive last year. On the bottom half of the financial statements on the commitment side, overall commitments are 36% more than, 36% of the budgeted amount and 11% more than prior year. The result of the 11% increase is due to wage increases as well as additional budgeted positions in the public safety departments and also the timing of certain encumbrances. We also received our Rita distributions for April. Overall distributions are $1.95 million, which is $182,000 less than April of 2023. The decrease is a result of lower bonus payments being paid to employees that work in Brooklyn from our larger organizations. So that's something that we received less of this year than we received more in prior years. So it's nothing to be concerned about, in my point of view. It's the first month that we received a lower amount of income tax revenue this year compared to prior year. And also, our city council budget work sessions have been finalized for this year. Our first session will be on Monday, October 21st. Second session, Monday, November 4th. And a third session, which is a placeholder which we have not needed over the last several years, that will be on Monday, November 18th. All meetings will start at 6:00 PM in the community room at the City Hall. That concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to legislation. And under old business, we have Ordinance 2023-40, which is up for third reading and adoption, enacting Chapter 157 Inclusion and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. And we need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second. To adopt. Aaron Barowski.
No.
Kevin Tansky.
No.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
And that passes four to two. Next is Ordinance 2024-8, which is up for third reading and adoption, amending Section 1105.03, General Fence Requirements within the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. And we need a motion to adopt.
Okay, a motion.
Second.
To adopt. Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-10, which is on second reading, and ordinance authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2024. Under new business, Resolution 2024-5, which is on first reading, a resolution accepting Cuyahoga County's 911 Plan. Resolution 2024-6, which is on first reading, a resolution nominating and voting on an appointee to Cuyahoga County's 911 Program Review Committee. Resolution 2024-7, which is up for first reading with a request to suspend the rules, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Laborers Local 860, Laborers International Union of North America for 2024 through 2026. And we need a motion to suspend the rules.
I move to introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
To adopt. Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Abstained due to a family member at the garage.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Just for the sake of the audience, legislation is required to go through three readings, and then we pass on the third reading occasionally. And there's several tonight. There'll be legislation that is passed under emergency, which this last one was. The reasoning for that is typically because due to timing. For the union contract, there's a set time on it. For us to go through three readings, it takes a month and a half. And so they suspend the rules in order to pass the legislation on first reading so that we don't run afoul of the timing for the union contract. So I just want to explain that since we have quite a few people here tonight.
Ordinance 2024-11, which is on first reading. And we also have a request to adopt under suspension of the rules, providing for the programs and community events operated and conducted by the Recreation Department of the City of Brooklyn. And the reason for the suspension on the rules for this is to start publicizing the new rates and lengths of the programs. And we need a motion to suspend the rules.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
To adopt. Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-12, which is on first reading with a request to adopt under suspension, amending Exhibit 8 of Ordinance 2023-8, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time administrative employees, non-bargaining agreement of the City of Brooklyn. And the reason we're suspending the rules for this is because, as I explained before, there was an error of 35 cents per hour, and we want to get this corrected as quickly as possible. So we need a motion to suspend the rules.
Introduced by all under suspension of the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
To adopt. Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll have our second public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. And please observe the five-minute time limit.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Houghton Lake Avenue. I'd like to say congratulations to these basketball players. I'm a little graduate, 1973. We used to have horses and buggies back then. Regarding the center median on Memphis, which I'm against, but it's going up. I think a lot of other people are, but... Now, the center median on Pearl Road, just past Snow going southbound, which is maybe a convenience, an inconvenience at times. I don't think it's maybe five years old. They've almost totally dug it up and put all this big river rock, if that's what it is, probably four or five-inch diameter. I would guess, not being an excavator or anything, probably at least $100,000 of redevelopment there.